Good evening and welcome to the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, April 11. As always, you can pick up our meetings via Zoom following the link that's available at pleasantville-ny.gov and via PCTV. And within a few days, get an on-demand webcast of both the work session we held starting at 7:00 and our regular session at 8:00. This is our second meeting of the month because April's the month when we have our organization meeting, which occurred last week. We're now back to our regular schedule, today being the 11th. And our next regular meeting is on Monday, April 25, work session at 7:00, regular meeting at 8:00. So we have a bunch of announcements to make, but I know also that there is some commentary from community members. And so I invite anyone who has something to say to the podium or to raise their hand via Zoom. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Board, for allowing me to speak here this evening. I just wanted to be following you through the background.
All right, hold on. We know who you are, but for the purpose, remind us who you are.
My name is Bernard Gordon, and I reside at 17 Hookfield Place in Pleasantville.
And he comes with a bit of a pedigree, which he has not shared, because he's a former mayor, a former trustee, a former chair of the Planning Commission.
Thank you for the introduction.
All right.
Recent developments in the R-2A and Special Character Overlay District, to me, expose a gap in the zoning code, which should be addressed as soon as possible. The large property at the corner of Bedford Road and Clark Street across from Ashland Avenue, 245 Bedford Road, was subdivided, creating two additional lots, one lot at the corner of Bedford Road and Clark Street, and an adjacent lot on Clark Street. The original lot is located in the R-2A Zone and the Special Character Overlay District. It is apparent that the R-2A Zone was created to allow two family residences only on properties abutting Bedford Road. The developer, as I understand, has proposed constructing two family residences on the subdivided lot with the structures facing Clark Street. The building inspector has determined that the subdivided lots remain in the R-2A Zone as they were part of the original lot, and therefore, construction of a two-family house on the subdivided lots is permitted by the zoning code. I am not questioning the decision of the building inspector. The proposal is under consideration by the Planning Commission for compliance with the requirements of the Special Character Overlay District. However, 245 Bedford Road subdivision exposes a gap in the R-2A Zone, which the Board of Trustees should address, I think, immediately. Initially, I propose the Board pass a moratorium on subdivision of corner lots in the R-2A Zone. I also propose a modification of the R-2A Zone with the following objectives. A subdivided lot to remain in the R-2A Zone must abut Bedford Road. If the subdivided lot does not abut Bedford Road, it assumes the zoning classification of the closest residential property not located in the R-2A Zone. And the reason I put that little caveat is, I'll get to later. To comply with the Special Character Overlay District, I propose that the residents in the subdivided corner lot must face Bedford Road. However, if the structure is approved facing the side street, the zoning classification should be changed to the zoning classification of the closest residential property not located in the R-2A Zone. The urgency of the moratorium is because of possible subdivision of corner lots in the R-2A Zone. For instance, the Girl Scout property is for sale and is likely to be subdivided. Permitting construction of two-family houses on Great Oak Lane will have, in my opinion, a negative impact on the neighborhood for a variety of reasons. It is clear that the intent of the R-2A Zone was to permit two family residences on Bedford Road. It was not intended to permit subdivisions enabling construction of two-family residences in one family zone, streets. When I was chairman of the Planning Commission, we wrote the Special Character Overlay District, statute in response to the construction of the office building on Tompkins Avenue across from Holy Innocence Church. There was a Victorian house on that property, which was demolished and replaced by a modern office, brick office building. The office building and its design were approved by the Planning Commission, of which I was chairman, because the proposal complied with the current zoning, although public sentiment at the time clearly opposed the approval of the site plan. In response, in order to preserve the character of Bedford Road and prevent or preclude the recurrence of a similar situation, the Planning Commission proposed, and the Village Board adopted, the Special Character Overlay District. As a result, in my opinion, the character of Bedford Road has been preserved and is being preserved. The R-1 districts adjacent to the R-2A Zone and the Special Character Overlay District are in need of protection to prevent or preclude a situation similar to the situation at the corner of Bedford Road and Clark Street. And I ask that the Board please act accordingly. Thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, could I thank you for that? And we have that in writing. You provided it in advance. Thank you for that. So obviously, lots of folks have been discussing this and reaching out to, I think, all of us. And we've had some preliminary discussions with legal counsel about what options might exist to address the concerns that you raised. And at least at the moment, and this isn't a final determination, there doesn't appear to be a precedent for what might be termed conditional zoning, which is to say something written in the zoning code that says, "You are zoned X, but that if something happens, you could be zoned Y automatically." Are you aware of anything like that?
No, I mean, I assume that there are some legal issues.
Yeah.
That's why I suggested in the beginning, there'd be a moratorium, so you'd have time to study it.
Yeah, right. So at any rate, and let me just throw this piece of it out. There are apparently some states, New York not among them, that do have some form of conditional zoning. But it appears, again, preliminarily, not final determination, that you can't have an if/then statement that says, "You are R-2A. If you are subdivided and your subdivided piece no longer abuts Bedford Road, you turn into something else." So there might have to be a different way to get to that.
Well.
So let me just explore one step further, just so folks realize. One of the problems associated with this is the question of whether we're really only talking about corners, which is obviously the place where this is likely to happen. There is the potential for further subdivision at an interior lot, but presumably, all of those lots would continue to face Bedford Road.
Well, first of all, as far as I understand, on the R-2A Zone, there are no interior lots. You would make an interior lot if you subdivided the current lot.
Which you could do.
Well, yes, but there's a lot of, if it doesn't face a side street, and flag lots are no longer permitted.
Right.
Because we wrote that as well. It would be hard to subdivide on an interior lot. Now, what you can do is, if that's an issue, you can take several steps. The first step would be that any subdivision on the R-2A, the building must face Bedford Road, and the curb cut must be on Bedford Road. That would certainly resolve that issue until you decide it later on, whether or not an additional, as you refer to as conditional zoning, can be implemented.
Yeah.
But.
So I mean, that's an interesting, and again, I don't say this to be argumentative in any way, we're just kind of kicking this around. In the example of the Girl Scout Building, if you said there can be no subdivision of a lot that doesn't have a driveway to Bedford Road, that would be hard to pull off. I doubt that you could have two curb cuts on the width of that lot, even though it's deep.
I would leave that to site plan developers.
Right.
But I think that if you don't do something, or you make, you create it, you extend the R-1 district on each side street to Bedford Road. If you put, for instance, on that particular lot, and I'm not saying that there are other instances in the R-2A Zone, if you put three or four two-family houses at the corner of Great Oak Lane, which the length, the length is pretty long.
Yeah, I think that's realistic under the current R-2.
With current traffic, right now, it's regulated because there's only one exit from the, and it's a single-lane exit, from the Girl Scout Building onto Great Oak Lane. If you had six additional curb cuts, with all the children walking to school, with the narrow turn onto Great Oak Lane, as you know, when there's two cars turning on Great Oak Lane, it can become very difficult. You have a very bad situation there.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, you couldn't have six curb cuts there. I don't think you could have subdivided six lots.
Well, if you have three family houses, each house has a curb cut. Three two-family houses is six curb cuts.
I don't think you're going to get six curb cuts out of that. Maybe, you might have, who knows?
Well, if you go past that, it's a very, it's a block long.
Believe me, I know.
It's a block long.
The other, the other interesting question there, and it's been a source of interest and concern throughout this process, of the Girl Scouts floating the idea of selling the property, is that another compliant use under a special use permit, say, for example, a not-for-profit school, would dramatically increase the activity and traffic at that site as compared to its current circumstance, which I think is likely a fraction of what it was in the heyday of the Girl Scouts' activity there.
Well, I can't comment on that because it's currently permitted under the zoning.
Right.
And it was St. Mark's School before it was the Girl Scout Building.
Right, right.
And I don't know, I don't know how many years it operated as a school, so that there is history of it being a school. The big difference here is that it's one-lane curb cut onto Great Oak Lane. And that makes a big difference. And you have all the kids walking up and down that street. But that's not the, this is not, I'm not presenting this as spot zoning, just, it's an example that is current at the present time.
No, I totally get it.
And it goes up and down Bedford Road. I don't know when the subdivision at Ashland Avenue and Bedford Road, I don't know how the classification, they put up a one-family house at the corner.
I believe that it is R-2A, but the buyer elected to build a one-family house.
So that is a situation, if the person sold it and they wanted to build another, you know, make a two-family house on Ashland Avenue. You know, I don't, I think that one of the issues that we have to be aware of is to protect the nature and character of the village, which is supposed to be, you know, a single-family, predominantly single-family village.
Sure, I get that. And I mean, it's interesting when you look at the census numbers, a, for many people, it's a surprisingly high number of percentage of the population that lives in multifamily housing apartments.
Well, it's getting, yeah, it's increasing, as we know.
But even, even 20 years ago, so. All right, so a lot of people have weighed in on this, and I thank you for doing so with such clarity. As I mentioned, we've already reached out to council. And, you know, one of the questions is, how best, you certainly wouldn't declare a moratorium unless you had clearly identified the problem, which you feel you have, and identified that there is a way to address it, right?
Right, so I don't think, I think a moratorium that, you know, so that everybody knows that's considering a development on a side street knows that there's an issue.
Yeah. So, and would you imagine that such a moratorium would capture the Clark Street situation?
The Clark Street situation, no. And I don't want to preclude it. If there's a moratorium, and if for some reason, the proposal that's before the Planning Commission is denied, then the moratorium would, it would take effect.
Yeah.
But as long as that proposal continues, and if it's adopted, it's adopted under the current zone.
And let me also say, in connection with that, that there are two things that are at least helpful, depending on your viewpoint, about the Clark Street situation. One is, as you already pointed out, the subdivided parcels remain in the overlay district, including the second parcel in, which, you know, that's another question, with the overlay district in some potential rewrite only affect lots that touch Bedford Road. But in this case, that's not the way it's written, and the math is clear, that the subdivided lot is also in the overlay district, which gives the Planning Commission, functioning as the ARB, it's now joined, some additional opportunity to weigh in. But the other piece of that is that the owner, in the course of the subdivision, voluntarily accepted the requirement that these two properties be subject to site plan review, which is also ongoing, which wouldn't be the normal case for a legal subdivided lot that is proposed to be developed as of right within the zoning, so.
It would still require Special Character Overlay.
No, my point is, we've got, the Planning Commission and ARB have those two elements in play, and so hopefully, that's helpful. So correct me if I'm wrong, I think that the proposed two-family houses there, and likely, if this were to be replicated, as you suggest in the Girl Scout property, would only be one curb cut for.
I have not reviewed the site plan proposal.
Yeah, yeah, so I just, in the category of clarity, I think the hypothetical of six curb cuts on Great Oak Lane of the Girl Scout property is really more like three. But again, anybody could propose anything, and that's a concern.
Yeah, it also depends how, why the curb cuts are.
Yeah, right.
But I also, you know, one other thing to consider is, in reviewing the R-2A Zone, if you put in the statute, the intent, that all, that all buildings but, you know, Bedford Road, face Bedford Road, that would give the instructions to the building inspector as to what he could approve.
Yeah, I mean, that is an interesting idea, and interesting in the context of the recent Ashland and Bedford subdivision, where I do recall, although it was a Planning Commission matter, some discussion about what qualified as the front yard and the side yard, because the development potential on that subdivided lot differed depending on how that were treated, so. Just an interesting question.
But I would also.
Thank you, Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department. In that circumstance, you know, just, just an interesting example of something that's already happened, had the house faced Bedford Road, as you suggest might be a requirement, it's still, in that particular lot, would have almost certainly had a driveway on Ashland Road.
Yeah, I, again, these factors are to be looked into.
Yeah.
But I think the moratorium is the way that you, that can be enacted, knowing that there is an issue that has to be resolved and looking for the solution.
Understood, so. And then the only last thing I want to say about that, and you can validate this, having been there yourself, is the council suggests that, you know, the minimum moratorium is typically six months, but that for a rewrite that would affect a significant zone, jumping through the hoops and making sure the analysis was tight, is likely a year or more, so. That said, there are some opportunities in the case of a moratorium to create the chance for a potential project to seek a waiver. And if they were seeking a waiver that aligned itself with the issue we seek to resolve, that might be a way to avoid freezing properties unnecessarily.
Yes, but I, and I think the developers need to know that there is a moratorium, so that should impact how they analyze what they're going to develop.
All right.
I don't know, is there any other questions?
Anybody else? Incidentally, I should have made clear in the, at the outset, Nicole Askwith is absent today, but Michael Pepperd is here via Zoom, and the current meeting regulations allow him to be a full participant and a logged participant, so.
Yeah, my question was just to, whether your viewpoint was that this affected the already purchased and proposed subdivision at Clark Street, which you answered.
Okay. Thank you, Bernie.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Ruth Fisher. I lived at five, I live at 571 Manville Road in Pleasantville. Don't plan to move.
Please don't. We depend on you being there.
I just came tonight because I know there will be a proposal about book bins in Pleasantville. And I believe in recycling, and beyond that, I believe in reusing as much as possible so we don't have as much garbage. I routinely visit the Chapacore bins. They have four of them. They're wonderful resources. I teach nursery school. I get a lot of books from there. I meet teachers there regularly who get books for their students. I'd say, from my observation, people spend maybe five minutes looking through four bins. I mean, it's not something people spend a lot of time doing. They come in, they get rid of their recyclables, they contribute some books to the bin, they look through it, take some home. It's not something that people are parking forever to do. And I think it would be a plus for Pleasantville to have something similar, and I just came to say that.
Well, I think, I think we agree it would be a plus, and trying to figure out how that might work. Chapacore has the advantage of a much more developed and elaborate recycling center with paid supervision across more hours of the week than we do. So one of the struggles we have is where to put it, how that would work, when people could get to it, and where they would pull off to park, just stay out of the sort of one-way flow that we've established for people coming through, so.
The library, at the library board meeting, was talking about the possibility of incorporating the recycling part of this at the branch, where there is much more room. Question for you, if you separated those two questions, the question of recycling with the question of reusing, and we established little free libraries around the village, which are open libraries that people in neighborhoods can contribute to, but also take from. They require some maintenance on our part, so it'd be something we'd have to talk about because you've got to send somebody in there and every month, take out the 10 copies of the textbook from high school or whatever that somebody decides to throw in there. So there's some work, but, but they've been popular and they've actually contributed to, they've been positive for libraries, even though it's sort of like ex-library activity, it actually helps people remember that the library's in the community and to go there. How would you feel about that?
The problem was scattered, if you, you know, it would require people who are really checking them out, to have to travel around to keep checking all of them, where the other way, it's all in one place. It would not be my first choice. It's better than nothing.
The benefit is, right, that if it's, if it's all in one place, it has to get recycled pretty routinely. So if you're checking it out, you're only checking it on that day, whereas it's actually a library if it's in the community. So it's not, those books are not disappearing at the end of the month.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's what the board's for, to figure out. I'm just saying, I think the idea is a good idea. If they did it in one place, if they had a bin for fact, fiction, and children, people would even go through it faster because everything's commingled in Chapacore, but I think.
And how, who would sort that?
Well, people pretty much drop off, because I know when I'm up at Chapacore, people come and say, "Is there a special bin for whatever they had?" I mean, no, it's not going to be perfect, but I think the majority of people who are readers would, and who themselves want not to look through a whole bunch of stuff, would tend to put it in the right bin. I'm sure the boards has explored Chapacore and found out how they do it.
We have, Eric made a field trip.
So, I mean, I only see it from the point of a patron who finds it extremely useful.
I totally get it. And we definitely have a little envy of the setup they have at Chapacore, but of course, they've got a tax base dramatically bigger than ours because they're a much bigger town, so. But as always, Pleasantville tries to punch above its weight class, and maybe this falls into that category.
That's a good job.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear you're not moving.
No, you start with me.
All right. Is, is there anyone else who had a comment of any sort on any subject? All right, there being none, we have a public hearing tonight, but let me just make a couple of announcements. I know David had one. The first is to remind folks that we're not without COVID risk. I can tell you that the report that came in today from the county, the list we get, and this is only people who test positive through a state system followed by the state, we had seven new positives, and currently have 32 positives showing as active in the state system. Recognize that anybody who tested positive with a home test never gets into that system, so I just want folks to realize that there are lots of new opportunities to get back to a regular life, and we all ratify that, but also be reminded that our number of positives have been creeping up. We went through a period of time a couple of weeks ago when days would pass without a single new positive showing up in the state system, and in the last seven or eight days, we've had new positives showing up every day. So I think the good news is that in, in the school district, the spread of COVID, or not necessarily spread in the school, but the number of folks who test positive has been pretty modest, I think well within what they hoped would be the case. But certainly, community-wide, we're seeing a noticeable increase, so my personal advice would be, be a little bit cautious in a circumstance when you're not quite sure what the situation is. So a couple of other announcements to make, just reminding folks, as mentioned, we're getting back to our regular activities, and the month of May and into June is a highlight of those activities. So we have Pleasantville Day on Saturday, May 21, in Memorial Plaza. We have the Memorial Day ceremonies on Monday, May 30. And as of the moment, it's our intention to go back to our usual template for that, which is to begin the ceremonies at the World War I Monument in front of Bedford Road School, and then have a modest community parade down Bedford Road, ending up at Memorial Plaza, where we continue the ceremonies in front of the war monuments at the Manville end of Memorial Plaza. So that, again, is on Memorial Day, which is Monday, May 30. And on Friday of that very same week, happy to report that the fire department parade, one of the great nights in Pleasantville, is going to be back. So mark your calendar for those items. Just a couple of things we've mentioned before that are worth noting. You can get an app on either your Apple or Android smartphone, if you are so inclined, that will give you a notification of when your trash and recycling pickups are happening on a given street. Go to the App, Apple Store, App Store, or the Android Store, and search on Recycle Right Westchester, and you will pick that up. It's a great, great app. It can, you can even set it to send you a reminder on the nights you're supposed to take your stuff out for pickup the next morning. And it's also a great mechanism for us to remind you of a special pickup at the holiday season, a change schedule because of a Monday holiday, or a sudden change in the schedule based on severe weather. So recycle Right Westchester, check out that app, it's really a great thing. I can tell you that some of the same functionality is available on our website at pleasantville-ny.gov if you click into the Public Works piece of it. Some of that same functionality still exists, so take a look at that. If Nicole were here, she would be the person to take over the report about the Grid Rewards program, but I think a postcard is being sent out, maybe it has already started to land, about a program called Grid Rewards. You can sign up again on a smartphone app. Essentially, what it does is it lets you know when Con Edison is approaching a peak power usage, and when peak power usage moments arrive, the utilities kick into gear smaller sources of generation that are, for the most part, inefficient and also expensive and generate a lot of pollution. So essentially, what they're offering is an app that says, "Hey, if you can cut back your power usage, we'll keep track of it, of the fact that you helped. That may keep us from kicking into gear these problematic small power supplies, and we'll send you a check for the savings." So click into that, Grid Rewards, again, the app, and keep an eye out in your mailbox for a postcard coming. We're in an environment where it's a little bit difficult sometimes to sort out what's really coming from the village or a village-sponsored enterprise and what's coming from the private sector. I can tell you that I recently got two mailings that kind of presented themselves as, as official government communications, but are in fact not official government communications, skating a kind of a thin edge on that front, encouraging people to sign up for power supply programs. You will be getting letters. programs. You will be getting letters in the coming months from the Sustainable Westchester Power Program that we're a part of. And anything that comes from Sustainable Westchester with the Village logo on it is part of a program that we have signed up for. So there'll be more on that to come, but for those who are interested in the nuts and bolts of it, you can check that out at the Sustainable Westchester website, or Westchester Power, I think, is the site specific for power. So.
And to add, in the words of checking my email, you could also do it for different accounts as well. So let's say you own a business, or you have rental property and have different meters, they'll let you sign up, different accounts. So, and they'll also guide you, somebody that's gonna email you or call you to guide you on how the whole program will work once you sign up. So definitely something worth taking a look at.
So the last thing I wanted to mention was that there's been an ongoing discussion and community engagement on the subject of leaf blower regulations. At our next meeting, we're going to establish a public hearing, which would occur on May 9, for folks to weigh in on the draft legislation, which will be posted at the time we post the public hearing at our next meeting, which is the, what did I say, the 20?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth. So keep an eye out for that. And then lastly, in the category of, of a shout out for the home team, my colleague on the board, Paul Alvarez, had a ribbon cutting at his new Pleasantville-based law firm. And thank you to Paul for moving that piece of his life here, so that now I think we have pretty much all the pieces.
All the pieces here.
And thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for organizing this series of ribbon cuttings for new businesses, and to PCTV for filming.
Thank you for, for coming, for everyone that came out. Appreciate it. It was a great event. Thank you, everyone, for the support. Friday, April 22 is Earth Day. On Sunday, April 24, please join folks at 9:00, sorry, at 1:00 PM for Sunflower for Peace. The sunflower is the national flower of Ukraine. And at 1:00 PM, an interfaith group of Holy Innocence Pleasantville Community Synagogue, St. John's Episcopal Church Temple, Bethel of Northern Westchester, and Emmanuel Lutheran Church are going to be donating seedlings and saplings for planting for Pleasantville Earth Day interfaith celebration. That will be at Lake Street at 1:00 PM between the town pool and PCTV, parking in both lots. And there will be refreshments served, and we're expecting some folks there as well. So please, please join.
Great. Thank you. Any other announcements of any kind? All right.
You, Peter?
Yes, Michael.
Is it, we don't have a meeting before the Pleasantville Music Festival lineup release event? Is that public information yet, or is it not?
Well, so thank you for pointing that out. At the moment, I believe that the music festival organizing group plans to have an announce party on Sunday, April 24, at 7:00 PM at Soul Brewing. And there'll be a successive reveal of the 16 bands that will be a part of the music festival. And then that'll all get pushed out through social media and the website very quickly thereafter. So the 24th of April, be there or be square. All right. With that, is there a motion, whoops, I'm gonna get back to the screen. Is there a motion to enter a public hearing regarding the fiscal year ending 2023 Village Budget?
I so moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Welcome to the public hearing on the Village Budget. All of the data has been published on the website at Pleasantville-NY.gov, and Eric Morrissey at a previous meeting went through a detailed presentation on all of the above. You want Eric just to recap the, the highlights?
Sure. So the fiscal year-end 2023 budget is tax cap compliant. It presents a 2.3% increase in the tax rate for a village homeowner. We did make some slight adjustments between the tentative and what we refer to as the prelim budget. We rolled back some camp revenues because VIP program may not be enrolling in our summer camp. So we've allocated a bit more fund balance, bringing it from 150 to 180,000. Some other slight adjustments, but that's, that's really the big change between what was presented and what's before us tonight. Also, the water fund proposing a 2% rate increase for water usage, and that's primarily due to the increasing operating costs that the wood water treatment plan, and also the expenses related to the actual treatment and acquisition of raw water from New York City, which saw significant spikes. And we're increasing refuse rates $1.50, which keeps in line with, with previous annual increases. And that is essentially what was presented a couple of weeks ago and is before the board tonight.
I thought you did a really good job in the written materials of pointing out where the largest increases are that are driving this rate increase, which has to do with healthcare. Do you wanna just restate that?
Sure. Yep. We've seen significant increases in the cost of health insurance. This calendar year, it went up by 12%, and we're projecting a 7% increase next year. We're also seeing, obviously, significant increases in energy costs. So streetlights, the electricity that runs our buildings, fuel usage and, and fuel pricing. So all the factors that are impacting homeowners are touching our village operations, and so we're dealing with that as well.
Thank you. So is there any comment from any member of the public on all that we have presented about our preliminary budget? Anybody on Zoom? There being none, I just wanna give a shout out to Eric, to our treasurer, Noreen Regan, to Healy Shaw, our deputy treasurer, and to all the department heads for a rigorous and extended process to bring us where we are. We are fortunately in, I think, a very, very stable financial position at the moment, but also cognizant of the headwinds we all confront, not only in the world of municipal expense, but in the world itself. So I think we've been appropriately cautious, but at the same time, as you already know, we have a bunch of very significant capital projects on the radar screen. Among them, the Manville Road Improvement Project, which is heavily supported by a $1.6 million state grant. But we're also well along in the design drawings for the replacement of the village pool, and the costs of that keep creeping up, not only because of the environmental conditions for materials and all of that, but also because of the reality that improving our resilience in flood conditions at the Nannahagan Pond and Dam is in the neighborhood of a $1 million venture. And even that is by no means a full resolution of all risk. It's just limits risk somewhat. So like life itself, stuff keeps happening, right?
Sure.
All right. There being no comment, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the FYE 2023 Village Budget?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. We have departed the public hearing. All right, we'll jump to the resolutions. Number 98, Paul.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the minutes of the regular meeting held on March 28, 2022, and the organization meeting held on April 4, 2022. The minutes are attached to this resolution.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, comments or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion approved. David, number 99.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the following budget amendments for fiscal year ending 2022 as listed below. In the general fund, $1,163 from a 1994 contingent to a 3120.106 police holiday pay, $500 from a 1994 contingent to a 7550.400 festival expenditures, $1,226 from a 6772.431 senior transport trips, to a 6771.417 Clinton Street Center repairs, for a total of 2929. And in the water fund, $319 from F8310.406 Water Administration Supplies to F8330.406 Water Purification Supplies.
Pretty straightforward. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Michael Pepperd via Zoom, you get number 100. Nice round number.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees, yep, you can hear me? Well.
We can.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approve the abstract for payment of claims dated April 11, 2022 for fiscal year 2022, covering check numbers 103299 to 103449. From the general fund, $207,239.56. From the water fund, $18,265.28. From the capital fund, $20,950.61. From the refuse fund, $11,636.62, for a total of $258,092.7.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions regarding the payment of claims? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 101, back to you, Paul.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the abstract for payment of claims dated April 11, 2022 for the fiscal year of 2023, covering check numbers 103450-103452. General fund, $14,000, for a total of $14,000. Attached, you can see the payment of claims for fiscal year 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this reflects expenses that are accrued to the fiscal year that we will enter June 1 of, of this year.
That's correct.
Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 102, David. I don't think you agreed the whole thing, but make your judgment about.
Okay.
How to get the thrust of it across.
Resolution number 2022-102, consider authorizing mayor or village administrator to execute a memorandum of understanding for participation in the short-term Westchester Power Extension Contract for Communities in Con Edison Service Territory. Whereas on August 24, 2015, the Village of Pleasantville, the village created Chapter 13, Article 1 of the Village Code establishing, to establish the Community Choice Aggregation Program, CCA program, whereby the village shall work together with Sustainable Westchester to implement the CCA program to the full extent permitted. And whereas the village's role under the CCA program involves the aggregation of the electric and/or natural gas supply of its residents and entering into a contract with an energy supplier, competitive supplier, for supply and services. And whereas the village is Sustainable Westchester and the competitive supplier are parties to the Competitive Electric Service Agreement, ESA, to supply energy to participating customers with a term running from December 31, 2020 until June 30, 2022. And I'm gonna skip a couple paragraphs that do not alter that understanding. Now therefore be resolved that the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding with Sustainable Westchester, subject to final review and approval by the village attorney as to form and substance in order to continue to participate in the CCA program in the Con Edison Territory through an extension of the ESA commencing on July 1, 2022. There's further resolutions in the record here. But I guess Eric can describe.
Is there a second?
Second.
So short version of a long story. You wanna take that away, Eric?
Sure. We're, we're going out essentially to bid for electrical supply. We have a cap rate at 12.7 per kilowatt hour, which is actually 12, not to exceed 12.5 kilowatt per kilowatt hour. Our current rate is 6.7 per kilowatt hour. So the expectation is that we will see significant increases in the electrical supply rates. But this is furthering our current program with a new contract.
And an extension of the existing contract to, to provide a bridge to the new one.
Exactly.
And then the, the existing contract did save those of, those villagers who stayed in it and didn't opt out quite a bit of money in the last few months.
That's correct. It, it provides a fixed rate over the length of the contract, whereas the default contract through Con Ed is a variable rate which spikes. So over the history of, of any contract, there are some months where you're paying more, some that you're paying less, but certainly with the spike in the energy markets, there has been some buffer there. The other piece to point out is this is for the green electric supply, so from renewable sources, as compared to the brown rate offered by the CCA.
So as I have commented in the past, dating back to 2015, I think that it's a great program, and it delivers a lot of benefits, not only some what had hitherto been modest savings, and in the last few months have been significant savings to folks, but also to the opportunity to increase the demand for a sustainable supply and therefore increase the market interest in developing sustainable supplies. And I think the good news is that even with the green, sustainable supply, folks, over the life of this venture, have saved a little bit of money even over the Con Edison brown or mixed supply. So, and again, in the current crazy world with energy prices spiking left, right, and backwards, I guess left and right, I shouldn't say backwards, if only they would. I, I, at least for my own money and in my own circumstances, both at home and in my office, am strongly in favor of it. So further comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Mr. Pepperd, 103.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby accepts the municipal separate storm sewer system annual report for the reporting period ending March 1, 2022, as prepared by the Superintendent of Public Works, with public access to the report available on the Village website.
Is there a second?
Second.
So as, as is clear in the, in the report, the state requires us to annually report on our storm sewer systems. The key point being to try to reduce infiltration and invlos from non-stormwater sources to document the level of such sources and to demonstrate an ongoing program, both to fix anything like that, and also, among other things, to reduce the number of impurities that get sent in to stormwater. So for example, you see our village street sweeper making its way around the village typically early in the morning, because that's the time when they can get through without a whole lot of cars in the way. But in addition to being a wise thing to do and keeping our village a little tidier, it's also a state law. So comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 104, David and Paul.
Yep. Resolved, the Village Board of Trustees hereby adopts the adopted Pleasantville Farmers' Market Boundary Map attached here, too. You can find the map in the attachments.
Is there a second?
Second.
So folks who, who frequent the farm market will notice that now we're in the second week of flipping the market from the Manville Road End of the, of the Memorial Plaza to the Bedford Road End. That is occasioned by the anticipated launch of our Manville Road Improvement Project, which is gonna have quite a bit of activity at the north end, and the farm market would be in the way. Thank you to Jeff Akonim and his DPW crew. A whole lot of work was done to revise a number of pieces of Memorial Plaza, both related to the farm market, but also related to our broader plans there. But farm market up and running in the south end of Memorial Plaza. I've been both weekends, and it feels like it's going pretty well. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. David, 105.
Resolved, the Village Board of Trustees authorizes the village administrator or designee to execute the custom sponsorship agreement for the Pleasantville Music Festival attached hereto with. attached here, too, with Natalia Wicksum Team/Compass Real Estate, Pennylic Ice Cream Company, and Lagon Music.
Is there a second?
Second.
The continuing paperwork associated with lining up sponsors and vendors for the Pleasantville Music Festival and folks who may have been a party to our last meeting or are seeing the things that are starting to go out now in marketing channels. We are really, 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 really pleased to welcome our lead sponsor, Northwell Health, the operators of Phelps Hospital in Sleepy Hollow and Northern Westchester Hospital in Mount Kisco. So thank you to Northwell Health and to Phelps and Northern Westchester. Glad to have you as lead sponsors of our music festival. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 106, Michael.
106, right?
Yes.
Yep. Whereas the New York State Department of Transportation mandates that the village provide a construction inspector on-site at all time during work on the Manville Road Corridor Improvement Project. And whereas the village has received an agreement for in-site engineering and HVEA engineering for such services attached here, too. Now therefore be it resolved that the Village Board of Trustees authorizes the village administrator to sign the agreement for in-site engineering and HVEA engineering for six months of construction inspection services related to the Manville Road Corridor Improvement Project in the amount of $268,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we have reviewed that proposal. Inside and HVAA have been, HVEA have been with us throughout this process. And correct, if I'm wrong, Eric, this substantial and unhappy number is consistent with our budgeted expectations and are largely driven by the requirements of the State Department of Transportation, which requires essentially full-time inspection services.
That's right. A professional engineer to be on-site at every hour during the project. They are testing materials, making sure everything is built to spec. That $268,000 represents the allocation that state DOT was going to provide to us as a share of the construction inspection costs. And our consultants have matched that in their proposal. So what we did with DOT is requested that that money be moved to the construction phase. So we're going to pay for this service. If we were going to use grant money towards a service, we'd actually have to select from a group of about 10 construction inspectors that are pre-approved by the DOT. We felt it best to go with the folks that designed the project, and this is a fair proposal.
Further comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 107, Paul.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the Recreation Department waive the 2022 pool membership fees for active members of the Pleasantville Volunteer Fire Department and the Pleasantville Volunteer Ambulance Corps residing within the village.
Is there a second?
Second.
Pleased to make this village resource available to active firefighters and ambulance staff who devote so much of their time to training and to standing ready to help us all. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 108, David.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby approves the mayor's appointments of the following persons to the Climate Smart Task Force Committee, Member Eric Gevelhaus, Member Gerard Falco.
Is there a second?
Second.
Appreciate the willingness of Eric and Gerard to join this worthy venture. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. 109, Michael.
Result of the Board of Trustees hereby waives 30-day requirement to local municipalities for a liquor license application by Pleasant Hospitality Group Incorporated, 152 Bedford Road, to the New York State Liquor Authority.
Is there a second?
Second.
So just to be clear, and we've commented on this actually fairly recently, liquor licenses are provided through New York State, but there is a, an opportunity for a 30-day waiting period for the local municipality to weigh in on the subject. We have no objection to this and normally do not. It's the State Liquor Authority that addresses these matters. And so rather than hold up a business, trying to do business here in Pleasantville, we waive the 30-day requirement. All in favor?
And Peter, this is, this is the extension of craft or something else?
I believe it's the extension of craft. Craft is doubling in size, which is, is great news. And I can report that I understand that the remaining space between, between the expanded craft and the bistro is, is soon to be under construction as a deli.
Oh, cool. Peruvian music. I mean, food. My uncle's doing that.
Great. Great.
Wait, what? I didn't hear that. What did you say, Paul?
I've been figuring out. My uncle Zach Dorian is going to get a cook who does Peruvian food to be sold there. So Peruvian food has a lot of good, like seafood, things like that, cebiche.
That's great.
This will be a, a wallet bleed, I'm afraid. All right. Did we vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved. Last one. 110.
Back to me, right?
That's back to Paul.
Whereas the Village of Pleasantville entered into an MIA with the Town of Mount Pleasant for the purchase of highway construction materials. And whereas the Town of Mount Pleasant awarded bids for the highway construction materials at their meeting held on March 22, 2022, by Resolution Number 147-22, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby awards the bids for highway construction materials as detailed in the letter from the Office of the Town of Mount Pleasant Highway Superintendent dated March 25, 2022. You can find attached this resolution, the bid for the highway materials of Mount Pleasant.
Is there a second?
Second.
So this is one of a variety of different joint ventures that are examples of the Village of Pleasantville and the, and the Town of Mount Pleasant collaborating and cooperating in circumstances where we can band together and get benefit of the elbow grease delivered by the other, or, or by the increased scale of purchases by assembling both of our demands into one. So thank you, as always, to Mount Pleasant. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion approved. All right. Is there any further comment on any subject from a member of the public? I don't think we have. Let's see. I know we do, potentially. All right. I see there being none. Any further comment from a member of the board? All right. Is there a motion to go into an executive session to discuss contractual and personnel matters?
So removed.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Thank you all for your attention. We're headed off to executive session. We look forward to convening with you all again on Monday, April 25. And on that occasion, we will be voting on the Village Budget, the subject of which our public hearing focused on tonight. So thank you for your attention. See you in two weeks.